Forward, I got three stacks of the panel questions that the oral debate was kind of grassy. There is.
All right, it is now 6:00 PM on Thursday, October the 23rd. I'd like to call this meeting in Rome City Council to order. We have a quorum of council members present. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please silence your electronic devices. And at this time, we will stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and this chance to govern ourselves. We ask you to lead, guide, and direct this council to do what is good in your sight, Father. We ask you to protect all of our police and fire and other public services, Father. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Flag.
Flag to the east. To the flag. In space, I'm there. You can do it very publicly. Our way to the banks. One mission under God. Individual with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag. Flag to the east is to be contained. One stage under one command of this.
All right. Deep. Silence. Silence. All righty. All right, at this time, do we have any public comments? Nope. Okay.
Oh, I got a public comment.
Did you? We don't have a sheet.
Oh, I just got here.
That's okay. All right. Moving on. Announcements and council members. October the 31st, we have the Fire Department's Trucker Treat, weather permitting, at the family park from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. November the 13th, we have a city council meeting, our next regular city council meeting, 6:00 PM. And on November the 15th, we have our fall cleanup and from 8:00 to noon. And there will be a shredder truck available. So if you have tax documents or other things you'd like to get destroyed, we will have that shredder truck here. Want to inject another date? November 4th will be election day. So I encourage everyone to exercise your duty as citizens and go vote, no matter how you vote, but go vote. There's a lot of important things on this ballot, including 14, I believe, individual constitutional amendments that are very important. So hope everybody goes and votes.
Mayor, what time is that shredder date?
The shredder date, again, is November the 15th.
Thank you.
From 8:00 to noon, just bring proof of residency of your lone citizen. Right? All right, moving on, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I think I should too. I approve the consent agenda.
All right, do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
I'm...
I'm...
Aye. Just to give council a little context, the mics still seem to be working, so there's no point to click them on until...
Yeah, we're not...
What's happening?
You can talk.
There we go.
There we go. We're good to go. We have microphones now. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the monthly staff reports and/or board minutes. I believe we have Public Works has a report for us.
Yes, sir. We do have, as requested by council, we do have a report that was included in your packet that we're happy to answer any questions on. We have made a recommendation to you all as far as maintaining the right-of-way and the easement as it exists within Crown Point twice a year to remove the debris, the weed growth, and the trees, and other foreign material that is in that right-of-way. I did list some, an overview on your report that shows the trajectory and where that easement is here on this first one. You can see that all of the red lines show that that property is owned by the homeowner that's associated with that lot. However, most of those homes do not have access to it. This is something we've discussed at least three times at previous council members. If you will turn the page to, or on your packet either way, I did find some photos here. One is on Google Maps that shows from Crown Road or Proxel Boulevard in 2013. You can see the rocks that existed in there that are supposed to help with the water runoff. Then you'll look underneath from the 23 Google Maps. I found Proxel and two different looks for that access. You'll see that one of those actually has a trampoline in the right-of-way and in the water zone. So I don't know if that's a liability, but that is definitely a challenge should something happen and that trampoline continue through the community if we had heavy water. You'll also see on the next page Sterling Road access, because there's two points to come in. There are some areas of these access points that are grass and are easily maintainable by the residents, which is required by our code. And that is something that I know we've had a lot of confusion on in the past, is who maintains right-of-way and who is responsible for upkeeping the property that is adjacent to it, and it is the homeowner that is in that home. The city has right-of-way to what's underneath, but they need to maintain the grass and mow it if they can in that area. So the only reason this came to our attention is we had a resident bring up the idea of all of the mess that you see in the background. If you look on the back page on Sterling Road, on this long skinny photo, you can see some of the debris that you see in there, some trees, some weed growth, et cetera. That's just not accessible for the residents. So Mr. Dominguez has gotten a couple of bids for us to maintain that twice a year. But then the homes that are in the general area that have the mowable part will be required to maintain that if they want it mowed more often for that right-of-way. Sir, is there anything you want to add?
Those bids are each time they mow or clean up.
Yep.
They're not going to take trees out. Some of the contractors were, they weren't real sure if they wanted to deal with that because there is some, so that is something Public Works can handle. It's a few trees and shrubs, but the weed eating is the heavy part and the part that we're expecting them to clean.
The cost, we're anticipating, what we've gotten bids were $3,000 to $5,000 for each time that they do that. It's not an inexpensive endeavor, but it is something that we would recommend that the city do twice a year.
What would be the frequency of cleanup?
So I would do, as Amanda said, twice a year, but I would do the spring and then no further than July, because if we do it in the spring and then one, say, in October, yeah, the weeds already stopped growing in October either way. So I think it'd be more, more effective towards the spring, almost two months apart, maybe three, depending on the weather. If we see it grow dry, maybe July, and maybe it'll stay dormant or not grow back, one of the two. But if we want it all year round, I mean, that's something else.
That's certain. That's certain. So...
We can, we will have to strategize on what to do with...
Yeah, just to kind of bring this back full circle to council, this is what, this is part of our approach per area, because not every area is going to be the same approach. So this is what we are recommending for this right-of-way easements, easement maintenance. There are others that we maintain differently or that the homeowners maintain, like Bywell, they have right-of-way, but those homeowners maintain that in front of their home. Questions? Nothing. This is mostly information from councils. Do you, we just want to make sure that you're aware, this is what we're recommending, this is what we were asked to do, is to bring back a policy that would fit that area.
They want $3,000?
Yes, sir. The cheapest one was $3,000. And I called, I probably called it six or seven, zero interest. There's just no replies. They go look at it and they're like, yeah, we're, we're not doing, I get it why, it's all manpower, there's no machinery going in there. That's what really causes the issue.
That's why I showed you the picture with the rocks that are underneath. That's where you can't really mow it. If it was as simple as taking a lawnmower in there or a tractor with a brush hog, yeah, that's something we could probably fold into Public Works' duties, but with that underlying debris and those rocks that were placed there in order to keep the ground from washing out, we're not going to be able to handle that.
And the rocks go fence line to fence line?
Yes, sir.
Or just in the lower part of the valley?
From the top of the valley to the bottom, usually there's maybe a foot at the top that doesn't have rocks, if it doesn't have. But for the most part, it's up and down the whole thing, especially around the turns. That's where it's heavily rocked.
I've just never seen the water run through that. Seems like you could rework the rocks and...
That, that's a whole level of issue. We can certainly have, but that's a different approach to maintaining this area, that if we're going to rework that, that's, we definitely have to hire some...
Engineering for sure to make sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure improvements can be done, but that's a whole different expense and a whole different...
We have to get our engineering firm to go out and look at this area to make sure that, because this is the city's right-of-way, we have to make sure that it stays where we're not going to have an issue where we'd be liable for people's fences or from damage or other things if we have a hundred-year flood and it washes out. I don't disagree with you at all, Mr. Johnson. That's very unlikely that you're going to have it, but the city is held to a different standard, and we can't just take a residential application and lay it on what we do within the city, and that's why our bids come in higher.
All right. Do we have any other discussion? All right, is there anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to, we have at this time, we want to open up the public hearing for the 2021 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, Community Development Contract, CDV 21-0018. And at this time, it is 6:11 PM. We'd like to open up the floor for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually in regards to well six. I'm not sure that we have anybody who's interested in speaking on well six. That is the one that is right here off of Main where the silver smaller water tower is elevated. This was part of a grant that we received from CDVG to do some radon abatement at that well. The work has been completed. We're simply waiting on some TCQ tests to come back so that we can move this to its final conclusion. But this is part of the grant. This is something that we have to open to see if anybody wants to speak, and if they do, excellent. If they don't, then we close it and we move on, and I send the notification back to the grant, grant works.
All right, at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this issue? Nothing heard? So at this time, it is now 6:12, we will close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving on to our regular agenda. We will have discussion, review, and any necessary action for the review of applicants for place five council position and potential appointment and council direction.
Thank you, Mayor. We were given direction as a staff team upon Mr. Schumay's resignation of his position at the last meeting in September to post this opening for the place five position, which will serve until the May elections. And then we will determine if this person wants to run, or if they do not, then they certainly can exercise that option, and someone else may or may not want to apply. So we accepted applications for a period of two weeks, and we've had two people who have submitted their name, Mr. Jeremy Finch and Mr. Joe Hernandez. They're both here. Generally, what we've done in the past is have each person come to the lectern and give a little overview of themselves and why they want to serve on council. Then council requires to executive session to have a discussion about that, and then they choose whether they want to appoint someone. And as Carver has said, especially at our last meeting, that that's not a requirement, but it is an option for council. So I'm going to turn the mic over to...
All right. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Joe Fernandez, if he'd like to say words to the council.
Hello, Councilman, Mayor, City Staff. My name's Joe Hernandez, live at 105 School Road. Lived here approximately seven years. Been at almost every meeting for my last six and a half. I have 28 years of public safety experience. Five of those when I started my career was at Fire and EMS. I was an arson investigator and inspector. Here recently, I've been, the last five years, I've been a patrol lieutenant at the department I'm at now. I've been there 21 years. Prior to that, I was at eight, I was a SWAT sergeant for eight years while I was a team leader, which required me to work with budgets, resource allocations, much of the same things you guys do here at City Council. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Tarleton State, and I'm currently in the master's program for public administration, and I'm also currently a member of the planning and zoning committee. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Jeremy Finch has applied for this position to...
Paul Jasper Gerson.
Mr. Dorn.
Okay, my name's Jeremy Finch. I live at 1304 Renshaw Drive. I've been, I lived here for about six years. I'm heavily involved in water and infrastructure. I am a, I've got 25 years in infrastructure. Like I said, I have a B water, I have a Class II wastewater. I worked on the Lindstuckie representative campaign. My father-in-law, who was a city manager for 35, 40 years, he's taught me a lot about city government. I know a lot about city government. I've worked for cities for now 20 years in the field that I've chosen. You know, I do handle budgets. I handle budgets with Argyle Water Supply, my current employer. I own a general fund, capital improvement fund, operating costs, what have you. You guys have any questions? I mean, I got involved because of the water and sewer debacle, you know? We got those bonds passed, and that was a big thing for us as a city, and I genuinely have the city's best interests in my forefront. I'm not here to, and if I don't, you know, I'm still on the P and Z board, so, and I really like P and Z. So anybody got any questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
All right. At this time, pending Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation, settlement offer, or to seek advice from attorney. And Section 551.074, personnel, discuss appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to hear a complaint or charge against officer or employee in executive session unless officer or employee requests a public hearing. It is now 6:17, we will move to executive session.
Moving back to the regular agenda, we will go back to item number three, the insurance bid review for calendar year 2026.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a representative from Gallagher, who is our consultant that we use to price our insurance. I'm going to give us about two minutes pause and let all those folks who don't want to sit through all of this.
Oh, come on, guys.
Let them go and have dinner.
I did want to say real quick, thanks a lot, y'all, for doing a little bit of business ahead of time so our payments could be.
Hey, I'm glad you're here. If my house is on fire, I want you guys coming over here.
Appreciate that. Thanks a lot, guys. Thank you.
Dean, if you want to step to the microphone and open the way up there, sir, we will give you a floor for a broad overview and then we'll get into some of the information I have for council.
I cleared the room.
Yes, it does.
Now, this is the normal crew we have.
Well, we're missing Joe because he's usually here.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. So Mr. Casey is our representative. And I assume it's just Gallagher? Is that?
Yeah, Arthur J. Gallagher is just went through a merger and acquisition with them. Jamil was an independent agent for thirty five years. Listen, I don't want to pull it up. Can you hear me now?
No, sir, it's not on. Push that button and hold it.
Where is it at?
On the side.
There's our microphone moving.
There we go. How's that? Better? Okay, good. Yeah. Yeah, of course. My name is Dean Casey. I'm the servicing agent. Been been the servicing broker for the city of Rome for probably the last seven or eight years. Yes, we did. Our agency just did went through a merger and acquisition with Arthur J. Gallagher in one hundred and thirty countries, number two, thirteen billion in revenue. If you know anything about Arthur J. Gallagher, been working as a broker for for the city of Rome. Of course, each and every year I work with Brooke and Amanda on, you know, getting our census, our data information together to go out to market and look at all the different carriers from from A to Z, the carriers that are available, even the the level funded carriers that takes qualification. You know, market from a fully insured carrier to, you know, Cigna, some of these new plans, Curative, and Angle that's on the marketplace. So we did go to to all of these different markets, including Texas Health Benefit, which is formerly TML, Texas Municipal Lead. Looking at it, I think one of the reasons we're just kind of in a we're in a rock in our space right now because of we've got some some major ongoing health conditions that have have given us some a rate increase. We did get a seventy one percent rate increase with our Aetna product, which is a level funded product. And so, you know, with that, you know, going out to marketplace, there are some other choices that that I feel like are going to be better for you. One would be Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then one would be United Healthcare. And I know that Amanda put together a landscape version just to kind of give you an idea of where we were at. We had some great rates previously with Aetna. So you can see we were at this equivalent PPO plan that we're looking at was at six eighteen eighty two last year. It's going to nine sixty six is where the the marketplace is. So realistically, what we're really looking at is probably still somewhere between a a twenty to forty percent increase, even with the best case scenario of looking at Blue Cross Blue Shield or United Healthcare. Okay? We have one outstanding carrier, Cigna, that's still looking at the underwriting piece of it. And I should probably have an answer from them here in the next day or so. But probably the rule of thumb, because all of the the level funded products have declined quotas. Texas Health Benefit, Angle, and I suspect Cigna will be, you know, right there in that same boat. So what I'm really kind of taking a look at is 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 first of all, finding out where the budget's going to be with with the city of of Rome. And then to look at, you know, trying to piece that in either with Blue Cross or United Healthcare. So I would continue to work with Amanda and Brooke. There is, you know, some some networks that are available with both the PPO and the HMO for Blue Cross. So even Blue Cross has had some some things that have gone on with them where they've dropped some particular hospitals in the area with Texas Health Resources. So it's a big part of the network that's right here in Wise and Parker County. So, you know, it's going to be, you know, kind of trying to piece that in as well. And I'll provide network information and and then continue to work with with Amanda and Brooke, you know, on trying to find the best the best rates.
Thank you, Dean. If I could just interject on the information that you have in front of you, you will see that the first I've stapled the pages together so they're easier for you all to kind of follow along. I listed our current coverage for what we currently have now with Aetna in comparison to the Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, and there are some different levels of the plan. The thing, the ones that align most closely with what we currently have are shown on the top of that first page, and they say BCBS number one, two, and three. When you look at the BCBS number four, five, and six, those are far more competitive as far as the pricing. My concern with this, if we make this decision to go this direction, is you have a lot of flexibility with the PPO and the HSA plan that you would be would be putting staff into an HMO option only. Yes, it is certainly more affordable, but not only is it the HMO or, excuse me, the the managed care type product only, they can only go to Baylor Scott White Hospitals. The no Texas Health option, which is what's invented in in some of our regional areas, and there's no out of network benefits. So there's also no coverage for Cook's Children. Is that correct?
Yeah, under under the under the PPO still has all of Texas Health Resources, UT Southwest, all of the doctors. Under that HMO product, they're losing the Texas Health Resources, which affects the Texas Health Resource Doctors, and it affects those five Presbyterian hospitals and then Cooks.
Did you tell me, Dean, and I apologize, I I did write this down, if the HMO was selected, is the medical city plan in this or no?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And what I did too is that that actual network that I gave to you, Brooke, tonight, for you to kind of take a look at, I took a look at a thirty mile radius on this zip code for internal medicine, family practice, general practitioner, urgent care, OBGYN, and hospitals. So that you can kind of see what is going to be left on that Blue Advantage network, because as you mentioned too earlier, Amanda, that price point under that Blue Advantage HMO network is the best is the lowest, you know, fully insured rate, obviously, but is the network going to work out or not?
Well, to the mayor's point, it is constricted. When you look at the second page, the United Healthcare options that show several PPOs, some HMOs, some HSA accounts, et cetera, that has more flexibility. It certainly has more hospitals and more childcare for Cook's Children in our area than what the other one has, but it is it is a change in cost. I did show on the last page the things that we have from dental, vision, et cetera. That's a very small change. It's an eight percent increase. And then several of the others like vision, disability, short and long term, heli doc visits, now there's no change in the cost on that. So just giving you an overview of the entirety of the package. We currently have twenty eight employees who take health insurance.
All right, council, you want to join everyone, please?
And if I'm
Like, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Keith, you're being called out. Being called out.
So let me, Christine.
All right, ready?
Oh, great.
One, two, three. One more. Perfect, thank you. Don't even take it.
Oh, I see what you're doing. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations, you guys. Now, moving back to the regular in the end room, we will go back to item number three, the insurance bid review for calendar year 2026.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a representative from Gallagher, who is our consultant that we use to price our insurance. I'm going to give us about two minutes pause and let all those folks who don't want to sit through all of this.
Oh, come on, guys.
Let them go and have dinner.
I did want to say real quick, thanks a lot, y'all, for doing a little bit of business ahead of time so our payments could be.
Hey, I'm glad you're here. If my house is on fire, I want you guys coming over here.
Appreciate that, thanks, Locke. Thank you.
Dean, if you want to step to the microphone and open the way up there, sir, we will give you a floor for a broad overview and then we'll get into some of the information I have for council.
I cleared the room.
Yes, it does.
Now, this is the normal crew we have. He's up.
No, we're missing Joe because he's usually here.
No, but.
Okay. So Mr. Casey is our representative, and I assume it's just Gallagher, is that?
Yeah, Arthur J. Gallagher is just went through a merger and acquisition with them. To me, it was an independent agency for thirty-five.
Dean, your mic is.
It's an. I don't want to pull it up. Those are two. Can you hear me now?
No, sir, it's not on. Push that button and hold it.
Where is it at?
On the side.
There's our microphone. There we go. How's that? Very better? Okay, good, yeah, yeah. Yeah, of course, my name is Dean Casey. I'm the servicing agent, been the servicing broker for the city of Rome for probably the last seven or eight years. Yes, we did, our agency just did, went through a merger and acquisition with Arthur J. Gallagher in one hundred and thirty countries, number two, thirteen billion in revenue. If you know anything about Arthur J. Gallagher, been working as a broker for, for the city of Rome. Of course, each and every year I work with Brooke and Amanda on, you know, getting our census, our data information together to go out to market and look at all the different carriers from, from A to Z, the carriers that are available, even the, the level funded carriers, it takes some qualification. You know, market from a fully insured carrier to, you know, Cigna, some of these new plans, Curative, and Angle that's on the marketplace. So we did go to, to all of these different markets, including Texas Health Benefit, which is formerly TML, Texas Municipal Lead. Looking at it, I think one of the reasons we're just kind of in a, we're in a rock in our space right now because of, we've got some, some major ongoing health conditions that have, have given us some rate increase. We did get a seventy-one percent rate increase with our Aetna product, which is a level funded product. And so, you know, with that, you know, going out to marketplace, there are some other choices that I feel like are going to be better for you. One would be Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then one would be United Healthcare. And I know that Amanda put together a landscape version, just to kind of give you an idea of where we were at. We had some great rates previously with Aetna. So you can see we were at, for this equivalent PPO plan that we're looking at, was at six eighteen eighty-two last year, it's going to nine sixty-six is where the marketplace is. So realistically, what we're really looking at is probably still somewhere between a twenty to forty percent increase, even with the best case scenario of looking at Blue Cross Blue Shield or United Healthcare. Okay? We have one outstanding carrier, Cigna, that's still looking at the underwriting piece of it, and I should probably have an answer from them here in the next day or so. But probably the rule of thumb, because all of the, the level funded products have declined quotas, Texas Health Benefit, Angle, and I suspect Cigna will be, you know, right there in that same boat. So what I'm really kind of taking a look at is, is, is first of all, finding out where the budget's going to be with, with the city of Rome, and then to look at, you know, trying to piece that in either with Blue Cross or United Healthcare. So I would continue to work with Amanda and Brooke. There is, you know, some, some networks that are available with both the PPO and the HMO for Blue Cross. So even Blue Cross has had some, some things that have gone on with them where they've dropped some particular hospitals in the area with Texas Health Resources. So it's a big part of the network that's right here in Wise and Parker County. So, you know, it's going to be, you know, kind of trying to piece that in as well. And I'll provide network information and then continue to work with, with Amanda and Brooke, you know, on trying to find the best, the best rates.
Thank you, Dean. If I could just interject on the information that you have in front of you, you will see that the first, I've stapled the pages together so they're easier for you all to kind of follow along. I listed our current coverage for what we currently have now with Aetna in comparison to the Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, and there are some different levels of the plan. The thing, the ones that align most closely with what we currently have are shown on the top of that first page, and they say BCBS number one, two, and three. When you look at the BCBS number four, five, and six, those are far more competitive as far as the pricing. My concern with this, if we make this decision to go this direction, is you have a lot of flexibility with the PPO and the HSA plan that you would be, would be putting staff into an HMO option only. Yes, it is certainly more affordable, but not only is it the HMO, or, excuse me, the, the managed care type product only, they can only go to Baylor Scott and White Hospitals. The no Texas Health option, which is what's invented in some of our regional areas, and there's no out of network benefits. So there's also no coverage for Cook's Childrens, is that correct?
Yeah, under, under the, under the PPO, still has all of Texas Health Resources, UT Southwest, all of the doctors. Under that HMO product, they're losing the Texas Health Resources, which affects the Texas Health Resource Doctors, and it affects those five Presbyterian hospitals and then Cooks.
Did you tell me, Dean, and I apologize, I, I did write this down. If the HMO was selected, is the Medical City Plan in this or no?
Yes, it's.
Okay.
Yes, it is. And what I did too is that, that actual network that I gave to you, Brooke, tonight, for you to kind of take a look at, I took a look at a thirty mile radius on this zip code for internal medicine, family practice, general practitioner, urgent care, OBGYN, and hospitals, so that you can kind of see what is going to be left on that Blue Advantage Network. Because as you mentioned too earlier, Amanda, that price point under that Blue Advantage HMO Network is the best, is the lowest, you know, fully insured rate, obviously, but is the network going to work out or any?
Well, to the mayor's point, it is constricted. When you look at the second page, the United Healthcare options, that show several PPOs, some HMOs, some HSA accounts, et cetera, that has more flexibility. It certainly has more hospitals and more childcare for Cook's Childrens in our area than what the other one has, but it is, it is a change in cost. I did show on the last page the things that we have from dental, vision, et cetera. That's a, a very small change, it's an eight percent increase. And then several of the others like vision, disability, short and long term, heli doc visits. Now, there's no change in the cost on that. So just giving you an overview of the entirety of the package. We currently have twenty-eight employees who take health insurance through the city of Rome, and the city allocates currently eight hundred and fifty dollars a month toward a health coverage benefit to your employees. And so when they are given their compensation package for the year, that is shown on there as part of their overall benefit package for being with Rome. So the question that I have now, and that we will have to speak to Dean about, is we have a short window because insurance doesn't give us a lot of time to make this decision or turn it around. And we have a lot of young families that are now on staff, people with small children. And I'm concerned about us making this move to the HMO concept in a vacuum. Yes, it is certainly more effective for them price-wise, but it does limit their options on coverage. So we can do, we can put this out towards a survey to the employees and give a overview, and then I can ask for them to respond and email, and we can figure out kind of what their thoughts are. The council also has the option to increase the current eight hundred and fifty dollars if they want. There's just no way to cover this well.
Well, also, this is a, remember, their benefits package is a recruitment and retention tool, which, you know, we, at least let's be competitive with what they can go somewhere else, you know?
So Amanda, do, do you typically choose one, a PPO, or an HMO? Like, in my experience, we could choose. This was the option, but we could choose. Is that your intention here?
Yeah, what, what we would, what we would normally do is, is Blue Cross Blue Shield will allow six plans under their benefit platform. So what we would probably try to do is do a kind of a high, medium, low PPO, and then do kind of a high, medium, low HMO, and then figure out what the employer contribution is going to be, and then spread that across the, the four tier range for the six plans, and then let the employee choose which, which plan best suits them for their benefits as well as their family needs.
So it would basically look like?
You would have a package that you could choose from, yes.
Yeah, it.
This would be a high, medium, low.
Could be, yes.
Yeah, and, and typically, just to, to give you an idea, we do, you know, benefit payroll deduction sheets that has the monthly rate. It will have what the employer contribution would be, and then would have, you know, the semi-monthly bi-week, I can't remember if it's bi-weekly or semi-monthly. And then that way, you would see all six plans that the city offers, and you would see what the monthly rate is, what the employer contribution, and then what the payroll deduction is. So then the, we would do an open enrollment meeting, Q and A meeting at that time, and then explain benefits to each and every person, and then let them choose which plan best suits them.
Good. Councilor, did the employees contribute at all to the?
Anything that exceeds the eight hundred and fifty, yes. So for someone who has an employee or spouse, an employee with children, you are generally contributing something, yeah.
On the HSA plan, does the city provide any matching?
So the HSA that most people are currently using, Mr. Loftus, is the one that you see under BCBS number three at a six hundred and eighteen dollars. Anything between that six eighteen and the eight fifty was put into the HSA account for the employee. They did not match anything, but they were getting money put in as a result of what the city had allocated. And I will tell you that eighteen of our twenty-eight are on that plan.
Yeah.
That's, that's a very attractive option.
Yeah. And, and what we did, and not to interrupt, but what we did is we took a look, and the concept has been through, through quite a bit of public sectors, all those private entities, that you faced an employer contribution, then the HSA plan was only six hundred and eighteen dollars per choice, and then they had two hundred dollars and some change to put into a health savings account that does accumulate. It's a MasterCard, debit card that you swipe, pharmacy office comes out instantaneously, and then comes out of the, the account, okay? So there, there's a health savings account administration for them to have that. And we did, yes, we had a huge influx of people that took that plan last year, but in fact, it was eighteen.
Now, the, the issue with whatever pricing we have received now at the eight hundred and fifty dollars that the city currently allocates for it, there won't be any monies put into an HSA unless an employee wants to allocate additional funds.
Yeah.
That gap is not there anymore.
Unless we increase it.
So that's essentially what we are talking about, is what we're going to contribute to it, not necessarily, because you're going to have different options for them to pick, so.
So it's just not like in some cities in the past where they pay for all the employee and you have to look at the entire package. Rome is, I mean, that's a very efficient way to do this, is to allocate X amount. So the question before council is, do you want to increase that or not? I do have, right now, the current eight hundred and fifty dollar contribution amount is about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year as part of their benefits package. If you increase that fifty dollars, it goes up to three hundred and two thousand, and if you increase it a hundred dollars, it goes up to three hundred and nineteen thousand. So I do have those numbers calculated, and then from there, we would work with Dean to find out what do people prefer based on that. Now, the, the challenge that we're going to run into in Rome is we spent the last three years getting people closer to midpoint, and now this is a significant increase in insurance that is going to be difficult for folks. It could impact them as much as six hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month, which is very significant.
So you said that the city contributes eight hundred and fifty dollars, and the current employee only is six hundred, or six hundred and eighteen dollars. So where does that other money go, does it go on an HSA? Okay.
And they, they use it wherever they need.
Okay.
So really, so really, it's not only an increase in premium, right? If they have to pay the difference between eight fifty, but it's also a loss in a little bit of spending money that they had in two hundred and thirty dollars a month.
Yes.
What's the E and S, the E and C?
I'm sorry, sir, I, I had to abbreviate that, is that the employee and spouse? Or employee and children, or employee and family if they insure everyone?
I was thinking in terms of be, it seems like it'd be competitive to try to keep that same two hundred and thirty dollar cushion over the current, the new cost.
Yes, I, I just don't think financially we can do that. That's, that's the problem we found ourselves in with the current rates that have been put together. Because if you look at the HSA option, it's, it's coming in at nine fifty-six. Even if we increase it a hundred dollars, that allows them to take the HSA option, but they're not going to have anything that the city's putting in. If you look at it under the United Healthcare, it's anywhere from eight forty, or excuse me, eight, eighty to nine twenty to pay, depending upon which one of those that they choose. And then if there's anything, say, if, if council increased it a hundred dollars, that, that would be, you know, seventy bucks in there that they could use for other things. It's, it's not great news on any front. We've been very fortunate for the past two years to have modest increase that Mr. Casey has brought us. I think he was as surprised as we were, but we have a, had a influx in employees. We now have younger families, they're using their coverage. It is causing them to go back and look at our usage for the last two years, and because our pool is small and we're not over the fifty employees yet, we don't really have a lot of the buying power that some of the others do. Is that fair?
That is very fair, because the two to fifty market is still a community rated market. So you're going to have, you know, your guaranteed issues, which you can see where those premium rates are. You know, our rates with, with that now were fantastic. You know, we rolled for, for two or three years with them, even had surplus that we were able to get chicks back. It's one of those years where we had an extremely bad year, and we've got some, some ongoing stuff. It's not, it's not, and, and stuff's not going away. So it's, it's not like I could remarket it to, to other carriers, but we did, we did do that due diligence stuff.
So what, what can, what will the budget hold?
Well, that, that's, budget is at max capacity at the moment. If we change anything, even if we adjust this, we're looking really close at some potential use of fund balance in order to accomplish that. It looks like it's about a twenty, forty-five thousand dollar swing, probably, if we, if we increase it a hundred dollars a month. But you know I've based the budget very conservatively. This year, we're probably going to be to the good a couple of two hundred thousand unless something comes up that I'm unaware of. But I am never going to push your budget to the nth degree to where I don't have some capacity to meet our needs. So I can't guarantee that we wouldn't have to use fund balance if we made that decision.
Do we have any data on the staff? Are they using the HSA money?
Yes, they are.
To where it's zero at the end?
Oh, well, I don't know if it's zero, but I know people, the eighteen that are using it, find it to be an extremely beneficial component. We have folks that use that for chiropractic care, for doctor's visits, for medication, yeah, medication at the, at the pharmacy, et cetera.
So I always know on the other end, like, they tell us, if you don't use it, you lose it at the end of the year. But where does it go?
HSA's do not, you keep it.
They, they roll it.
Yeah, flexible smoking account is the user loser account, kind of the old one twenty-five. Health savings account just rolls over each and every year, so that money continues to, to, to grow each and every year.
Hi, Mr. Loftus? Yeah, I'm wondering if there's some sort of a compromise here, way where, say, we go from eight fifty and increase that to nine fifty perhaps, but then specific to the HSA plan, that if they're going to, let's say, if we match up to one hundred and fifty dollars of their first one hundred and fifty dollar contribution out of their own pocket, something like that, I, I don't know, trying to come up with.
Yeah, I, I know where you're trying to go. The problem that we are going to deal with is, we've got a lot of folks living close to the, close to the edge.
Yeah.
And some of these, when I have to roll out these numbers, they're going to have to make a hard decision whether to insure your children or their spouse. And that's just the sad part of what we're dealing with. And, and, and talking to Mr. Casey, this is not particular to Rome. This is in the marketplace that has gone on for inheritance in general. This is in other cities that he's represented, et cetera. Because we are still so small, we just don't have the capacity from which to go out and be a major competitor. You all know, we've looked at trying to consolidate a bunch of cities and get bigger numbers. It's just not doable then. The carriers are not offering or rating those type of coverages because we've talked to him about that as well.
So I know that, oh, sorry.
The collective bargaining are, are kind of few and far between, they, they last a couple of years. You may have two or three cities that join in an effort, and then you have one city that drives health conditions and it breaks that up. So they may run for a couple of years, and then at some certain point, one of the three municipalities that are, that are joining that collective bargaining comes up with the health conditions. And then the other two cities realize they can go get cheaper rates on their own, so it dissolves. So, you know, we've definitely, if you, if you have cities in the area that are willing to look at that, we, we can put it together.
They're willing. It's just an issue that you described, that, that's when I see people start to say, oh, I don't know. Because it's like, we've talked about it from the regional mayor's perspective, a lot of the cities. But if, if, say, a city like Newark, which has very few employees, is helping to subsidize to cater, they're not going to be interested in doing that for the very reason that we're talking about.
Could that be something where these smaller cities come together and they get some sort of?
We tried.
We've tried that before. That's what he says, it doesn't last.
So like, if, if, if we have a bunch of claims and we're in with Boyd and Newark, and because of our claim history, it drives the price up, just like it has done this year, then Boyd can look at that, say, well, you know, if we break off from them, our claim history isn't this.
You can get a cheaper.
And you can save, yeah, and so then, then you don't have any benefit.
So I know that you're going to give them options, and it looks like, you know, number four, five, and six, even though they're probably not the best option.
They're the best option financially.
That's what I mean, like, you could have that as a fallback, like, okay, well, it's not perfect, but it's a lot cheaper, especially, you know, when it comes to employee and spouse, it's three hundred dollars cheaper.
It limits you to one.
Yeah, but, I mean, but.
But one network is better than no network.
Yeah, they're true.
I agree. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Randall. I like the nine fifty employer contribution, and I like the idea of them having this BCBS HMO option, and it even would save them like three hundred and ten, if they've got, if they've got littles or spouses, it will save them three hundred dollars compared to what they're paying this year.
Yeah. And the one, the one really amazing, you know, caveat with these HSAs is the employee can use the money on their dependents. Dependents and I can be on the plan. So when they're getting the two hundred and fifty dollars, and it continues to accrue in the account, and then it's a rollover, so it is a, it's not a user or loser account. Then if something happens to their kids and they happen to be uninsured, they could still take it to an office visit, a prescription, and it comes right out of that, that HSA account.
But with BCBS, we're not going to have the HSA option where there's any surplus to go in.
There won't be anything.
We, we would, if you took a look at, you know, on the, on that, on the Blue Advantage, the HMO is coming in at six eighteen, six, six eighteen eighty-eight, that's a, a fifty-five hundred dollar deductible.
Which one is that, Dean?
Hundred percent.
I'm on my list.
That is on, you know, the regular spreadsheets that I did.
Yeah, I have those.
It's on the, the second to the last one, it's the S ninety-one ADT. So it's a fifty-five hundred dollar deductible, hundred percent co-insurance, and then see, it's coming in at six eighteen eighty.
Yeah, this is HMO on my sheet, not HSA.
It, it, that is, that is just, it is an HSA compatible plan.
So it's, it's not an HMO?
Uh, it is the HMO. It's the Blue Advantage Network, but it's a, a health savings account compatible plan.
Is that, that?
So it's a ninety.
That would be number four on your list.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the one I was looking at, but you said what was the fifty-five hundred was what?
It, that's the deductible.
Yeah, they have to meet that, wait, they have to meet that, wait.
No, as long as they stay in network, they have the same type of things that others have. They have copays of, when you go to get prescriptions, five fifteen, fifty, or a hundred, depending upon what you're getting. They have mail order copays, there are, and Dean, help me here, doctor's office visits. It does say you pay the deductible.
Under that HSA, under that HSA plan, one of the, the IRS rules is there can't be any copays, no prescription card, everything is subject to the deductible, and then you have a hundred percent coverage for preventative care. So a, a high deductible health savings account plan is all deductible base, and a fifty-five hundred dollar deductible, then a hundred percent.
So it, so it's going to pay for anything normal, wellness, those kind of things?
It's got a hundred percent for preventative care.
And then if there's an issue, then we got to meet that fifty-five hundred dollar deductible.
Yeah, and, and at six eighteen to, to nine fifty, I mean, you're going to have three hundred dollars a month that you're going to put into that account. You're just going to have to be willing to go to that, to that Blue Advantage HMO network.
And again, that would be their choice because there will also be a PPO choice.
Right now, the deductible on the HSA, Mrs. Ty, is twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, right now, we've got currently twenty-five hundred HSA plan with thirty-seven fifty is a max out of pocket.
Like I say, none of these are good.
Yeah, I mean, you look at the BCBS HSA plan, and you're looking at employee and family, that's an eighty-four hundred dollar annual increase. That's.
Which is not sustainable.
Tremendous amount for employees.
No one would be able to, to absorb that kind of cost. Uh, we currently have, is it one?
We've got three employees, children on that, twenty-seven fifty.
We have six, seven employees that take advantage of something other than employee only.
Yeah.
Just seven?
Yes, ma'am. Twenty-eight duty, um, twenty-eight is our total. We have eighteen that are, I wrote that down on my notes. We have twenty-one that are employee only, and then seven with spouse or family.
And the eighteen that are doing HSA.
Yeah.
I have a question. So on these plans, of course, the employee is covered, you add spouses and kids. Is there a limit to how many kids you put on your employee? I mean, you can put as many as you want, it's still a flat rate, right, until you meet your deductible? And then it goes eighty-twenty, is that what it does?
Yeah, so the majority of it, yeah, there's some plans that have hundred percent co-insurance or eighty to twenty.
Yeah.
Even seventy, thirty.
So you've got to stay, and on a HMO, you've got to stay in network, right?
Yeah.
And you have to have a referral.
Yeah, you got to have.
What do you mean, not going to get a referral to go to another doctor?
Right, right.
Et cetera.
Just like my beloved Tricare. Exactly. So what you're going to do is you're going to, you're going to try to find a, you know.
Yeah, I understand all that works. I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, I, for somebody who does this, it, it's important, you know, to try to keep the deductibles for the employees as low as possible so it's reasonable for them to hold on to the insurance and make them want to work here.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that's the main thing, with long-term growth, and, and you've got to have good people who are running good city, and, and I don't want, or I don't think it's wise to, you know, have these crazy deductibles, and I know insurance is going up, it, it's going up everywhere.
Yeah.
So I, I just want to make sure these deductibles are not something that's just not reasonable for these employees to pay, you know, for their kids and their wives and selves.
Mr. Casey's done a good job of putting together a longer sheet that I did not.
I don't have.
No, no, I didn't. No, no, I didn't give this to council because it it gets into all the weeds of the deductibles and all of the other information. The biggest question from your standpoint is, A, do you want to increase what you're allocating to employees per month? And if you do, what is that amount? And then B, from there, we could, we could go through the process with Mr. Casey to try and find something that has the, yeah, the biggest variety. Because, you know, for somebody that has children and you have an emergency, this is, and I know I've I've said this before, but I'm gonna bring it up again. If you have a young child that has an emergency, you're not going to Cook's on this HMO, on these red plans. You're going to Plano or Dallas.
Well, there's a, I mean, there's a good laundry list of the hospitals that I that I pulled up in a hundred and forty mile radius using this zip code. And, I mean, there's hospitals and there's doctors right here in the area.
And they're not child based. It's not like Cook's Children and with a person with young, I I have young children at home. If there's an emergency, they're going to Cook's Children. I'm not gonna drive them to Dallas. But we just give them the option.
Right, some option, some option is better than no option.
I agree with you. I'm just trying to give perspective on the entirety of the panel that we had to wonder.
Right. So so you're going to choose the plan. You just need to know the number.
Mrs. DeGan?
Yes, sir.
You may have already mentioned this, but I'd just like to ask again. If increasing the eight hundred fifty dollar contribution, what will the budget padding be there?
Well, again, Mr. Loftus, that's that's kind of what is council's appetite for potentially using fund balance. We have had a surplus for the past several years. I don't know that we won't have a surplus in this fiscal year, but I don't ever budget to a red line. I always make sure that I'm conservative in my recommendations to you all because I don't want to have to come in and say, whoa, we missed our numbers. So best I can tell, as of now, we should have a surplus even in this fiscal year. But I can't guarantee any of that for you. So it's a possibility that if we make this decision now, that there may be some use of fund balance. And we've got a considerable number of days in reserve, I will tell you that, way more than what your policy calls for. There are avenues for release on the horizon with development that will come our direction. But we don't want to get ourselves already pre-spent money that we don't have. So that's why I I budget this very cautiously in what I'm bringing to you because I don't want us to say, well, we're expecting X dollars from this to come in and add the more taxes in twenty twenty six and come to find out it doesn't come in till twenty twenty nine.
So could we theoretically increase it one hundred fifty to a thousand dollars?
No. I would unfortunately have to say that's probably not in our best interest in the budgeting. I think a hundred dollars is reasonable. I think anything more than that, and we would have to make a decision in the next fiscal year. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think also too, if you're if you're getting into a position to where you're gonna go, you know, nine fifty, which is gonna be a hundred dollars employee times twenty eight times twelve months. You have some silver metallic PPO plans for Blue Cross. It's going to get you under nine fifty. So you could have, still have a hundred percent plan under the PPO side. Now, how that's going to equilibrate over to a health savings account that's under the PPO side is gonna be running at nine fifty, so you're not gonna really have the access of that money. Going Blue Cross over United Healthcare, the price point's definitely there between that Blue Choice PPO network and the Blue Advantage Network. So I think that that to try to keep that concept of that nine fifty, keep you at a a six eighteen because you could, there are some other HSA choices that could go lower deductible to get us closer back to that twenty five hundred that only gets up to, I mean, there's a thirty six hundred dollar one that's six fifteen. So there are some other other items, especially going to nine fifty. You're still gonna be in a position to where you're gonna have two fifty, three hundred dollars.
So council makes the decision to potentially increase what they're contributing to the employees' coverage. There are some other options that we could look at.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And and what I did is I just showed you, I put six together
Yeah.
of, you know, the thirty five plans that they offer. You know, seventeen PPO, seventeen HMO. And so, yes, we could probably back in and really what, I would probably say for what you're trying to do and even up up it into nine fifty, I still feel Blue Cross is probably the better choice. You're just gonna have to kind of squeeze in there and look at that Blue Advantage Network to see how that, how that's gonna accommodate everybody that's in, you know, Wise and Park County. And so we can really kind of look through those lists.
Which was one of my.
My point is just so, so much better with Blue Cross than than where I'm at with United Healthcare.
So explain to me again, Dean, on the, this is the Baylor Scott and White, right? So we're not in their network, we're not showing green, so.
Yeah, you had to remember too, Baylor Scott and White declined to quote us because we had eighty percent of the group was not, lived outside of Wise County and Park. So Baylor Scott and White wasn't even a choice. And so they're only Baylor Scott. So in the same deal, UT Southwest and Texas Health Resources are doctors and hospital related network.
Okay, okay. Well, council, what would require a man and a staff needs is either guidance or if you wish to increase the amount of allocated monies that are the employee contribution, that would require a vote. So at this time, I would just ask, would you make a motion for either or?
Oh, wait, hold on, hold on. So if we bump this, I understood you, if we bump it one hundred dollars, like we can move into a better insurance?
Well, it's, it's, what what I was saying is for for that nine fifty that you're going to allocate, I can find a a very good silver Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO plan that will give you a hundred percent plan. The bottom line answer is yes, yes. For nine fifty, you can get into a good hundred percent employer paid property for the Blue Cross.
So we have that in the budget, a a hundred dollars?
Yes, but we may have to dip into our reserve. Uh, that may be required. And we can't make guarantees on what the future may hold, but yes, we can do it.
I think it's the right thing to do for people.
I agree.
Are you ready?
Well, do I have a motion?
I move to increase the employer contribution for health insurance coverage from eight hundred fifty dollars a month to nine hundred and fifty dollars per month.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, council.
Thanks very much, yes. Staff will be very.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. Appreciate you.
Very much appreciate that, thank you.
Awesome. Trying to make something clear that's very clear. Thank you.
All right, moving on. We have item D, which is the public utilization creation, which is the Westport Public Utility Agency. And what we need to pass is ordinance, an interloble agreement and funding document. All right, I know I've been talking about this now for many months. Since our water district got killed by the legislature, we went around and had a plan B. We're gonna set up a public utility agency, which does not require legislative action by the state, which will give us basically the same opportunities to get water projects done for the entirety of Wise County and around us. So right now, there's going to be fifteen agencies, towns, S U, SUDs, MUDs, the county. And we're at fifteen board members. Each city will have one board member, that's nine. We have two from the, one from each of the two SUDs, which is Walnut Creek, the other one. And one from each, from two of the muds, which would be RBR, and I'm not sure the name of the other one, so. And then two from the county. So no one has control over this board, total control. I'm really in favor of this. We've got to do something about our water. This will enable us, we've already been given tentative approval to pull water out of Eagle Mountain Lake uh, for a future project. So what we, every entity that's on this PUA has to sign and pass a concurrent ordinance. Everybody's doing the same one. And yes, it's going to take some money until we can start having income from the water sales. So what we need now is to vote on this ordinance and I'll leave that up to you for discussion now.
Okay, under section five on this, on that ordinance itself, it says director qualifications. I just wanted to clarify because I don't know, it says a board, a board member must reside in the territory or certificate of convenience and necessity. So what is a territory for this?
Generally, the city limits or in the district like for Walnut Creek, their their district is very large. So it it's meant to be a broad conversation of folks to include. And I think one of the hiccups that they had before with some of the the muds and the improvement districts was if they live in the area, they want to be able to appoint someone who is knowledgeable of the system. But the beauty of this concept is it is not where the cities control everything or the muds control everything.
Because in the past, these, the muds like RBR has and the other, and other developments using municipal utility districts, their their board members may live in Dallas and or their investors are on it. We're trying to keep this low.
Yes, I I think my, what my concern was, was that is it just the city limits and we're having to find somebody within the city limit or the CTN?
No, because first is.
Yeah, it can be an employee of the city, but not an elected official.
Correct, I I read that. I just, yeah, I want to make sure there was no issues with.
No, ma'am.
Just keep in mind, a BUD is different than a sud or a mud in that to they cannot, they cannot get easements, they cannot intimate domain for water lines. It all will have the cooperation throughout the cities. And that's kind of a disadvantage, but it's the only thing we've got right now.
Well, it's the only vehicle we have to solve our problems. So what's your question?
The amount that we're paying into this, is this a yearly thing that we're?
This is the first year only, that it was reevaluated for the second year, depending upon where we're at in the process.
And do we get reimbursement and?
Potentially, there are, there are some levers within the Public Utility Agency documents that could allow the cities and the others who have put money in the bidding to be reimbursed as it starts to generate funds.
Because Walnut Creek is putting in like eighty five thousand dollars. And we are getting off very lightly. And but again, I believe there's going to be a mechanism for future for these people to recoup these investments. But it's a regional approach where the month, the dollars are spread out based on the potential future water taps and customers that will tie into our water system, which will pay for everything. And then we can get other dollars to get these projects done, like building a water purification plant, hyping this stuff north. So I believe this is the the one D answer we have. There are no other answers because you're not gonna see any more surface water built in North Texas within our lifetimes, I don't think. It takes fifty years to get a lake built. So I ask for your support on this. If there's any more discussion, I'm open to hear.
Just now that the way that pay for it is through water rates. And our subscription will go up, just be prepared for that. If our subscription goes up, then our water rates have to come up.
Our water rates are going up anyway.
Yes, right, that's right, they should.
So the right size for building system, so. But the problem is, in the near future, the people that live here the longest with shallow wells are the ones that's gonna go dry first. So if we don't do something today, we're gonna be in a world of hurt in fifteen years from now. So I believe this is the answer forward. Nobody has seen a better answer because until they can bring water up from the Gulf of Mexico, we got what we got, so. And there's three lakes in Wise County, none of them, we get water free. None of them are our, we don't own any of them. This is our chance to have a better, have a more dependable source of water, hopefully to stabilize rates. And I believe this will be our answer.
Is this two separate motions?
It's been, you should have agenda commentary for both.
Dean, I have a motion.
I'll take it now.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of an ordinance to create the Westport Public Utility Agency that will work on behalf of the Rome community to locate and secure water and or sewer option.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Loftus, you seconded it?
Yes, I did.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Your second motion.
It's for the interloble agreement?
Yeah, dial A.
I make a motion to approve the agreement to fund the Westport Public Utility Agency based on the pro-rata share of the costs shown in the exhibit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you, council.
Thank you very much. We'll get notification to our member agencies and get this information out to them as soon as possible because this was our last meeting before we had the deadline to get this passed. So I appreciate the confidence and the investment that you all are making in in not only our community, but in our region. This is a very, very big step forward, so thank you.
All right, moving on to item number E, we have road repair bids regarding Troxel, Bullamari and Morris Street.
Thank you, mayor. I'm actually going to wait for Mr. Dominguez to approach the microphone. He is the subject matter expert on all of this good stuff, so we're gonna turn it over to him.
Good afternoon, Mayor Telfold again. I am bringing forward two areas on, one is Morris right next to the water tower and the other one is the very far end of Troxel. These two areas have gotten very bad buckling. I guess the right word, popple, is not even a popple, it's worse than that. The one at Morris Tower, you hit it thirty miles an hour, you're gonna feel it. I mean, it's gonna rattle definitely your teeth, your truck, everything. And the one on, in the Troxel, I have, the trash trucks very heavy on top, we have fire trucks too. But if we do not address these two issues, it is gonna get a hundred times worse. And it's gonna be quick, we're going into wet season. So I had brought these up because I think it's time to bring it up and see what action we want to take and and how we want to approach this. I did get two bids, one from G-Rod Construction, the other one from Raynolds Construction Company, LOC. And I have asked for other bids, but I'm having issues getting some response back from some contractors. And the two bids I have, one is for a four inch layover. So the four inch is just a thicker layer of what's there. I'm hoping there's four inches there now, but there could be two. And one of the bids, the lower bid was sixty nine thousand. The sixty nine thousand dollar one was they're gonna go in, they're gonna take some of the old materials out. They're gonna put a a hardening base down and then they're gonna put two inches. I would not push to that because I think two inches for a trash truck or any heavy machinery or vehicle, I think it's, it's just gonna push it right out. I did ask for them to update me a quote, but they did not get back to me. And then the other one is G-Rod Construction. I went to Boyd, they did a road behind the car wash, I'm gonna say Boyd Street, running east, I've been so many years. But they, they redid their road and it's smooth, it's good. They did a orange layer, I did see that when the construction was going on. And that is something more feasible, one for the trash truck and two for fire trucks, of course. But those areas do need to be addressed.
We're paying forward again.
Even more, it it'll, it only broke, that's how this works.
So let me give you a little context of the current state of the roads in our community. Not very good. We we have several that need to be repaired or have some sort of crack ceiling or other repairs done. But we've prioritized the worst two and brought those forward so that we can start to look at this in a kind of one bite of the elephant at a time concept. In order to do a holistic repair to roads would require bond issuance. And we, I don't believe we're in that position to fund that at the moment. So this is what we've brought forward. We do have some money in general fund that allows, apparently for road repair. It will not cover all of this project, but it will cover a good portion and anything else will be a budget adjustment.
And you're saying just four inches over this?
No, no, they're gonna do four inches of flex base at the bottom. The the four inch, the eight inch quote is four inches of flex base. They're gonna compact it and then they're gonna do a four inch overlay.
They're tearing the.
They're tearing the old out.
Yes, sir. Eight inches. Yeah, yeah, that was my first thought. We can't overlay it because that's what was done in the past. And on the Troxel pictures, you can see where they did the old one and it just sandwiched it out because that's not how you fix a road.
I walk around a lot, so I see a lot of this. And, uh, you know, one of the observations I've made is that we have certain areas in town that have very large pieces of gravel, very prevalent. In fact, Morris Street right up there is one of those places. Does the presence of those large pieces of gravel, uh, cause additional wear and tear on the roads?
I would imagine big, big pieces of equipment. I could see that kind of pushing it into the road, but yeah, I think about it this way too, is when you drive over a, just a round rock, your tire is the one that flexes. But I mean, it's, I promise you, it's probably not good for the road, uh.
It's dangerous for motorcycles.
The biggest issue we have on Morris, in my opinion, is it's, it's a downgrade.
Yep.
And so as the big trucks come down and they put on their brakes, they're kind of pushing it and it's alligatoring and that sort. There's not a lot we can do to fix that because it's just degrading of the road. Um, but Mr. Johnson probably knows quite a bit about all of this if he wants to weigh in on it.
Please.
Change direction of the trucks.
No, sir, I cannot, no. But, uh, what we would be looking for from council is if you're wanting us to fund this project, as I mentioned, some of it is, could be taken out of the current budget that we've approved for this year, uh, but not all of it.
How far back are they going? They just doing the pothole or the ruts themselves or are you going back past the rut above the ends?
So the one in Troxel, we're going a hundred twenty-five foot. So from before the ruts began to after laying, uh, because I didn't want to leave part of the rut into the new one and then the trash truck comes through and it's going to, it's going to ease its way into breaking the, the new stuff. So I did go past it, but I didn't want to go way past it either because the whole road, I mean, it, what road you want to drive by, it's all the same condition. But these two are specifically the worst.
Boy, you normally went twenty to fifty. So you're going a hundred twenty-five?
There is a hundred twenty-five feet of damage. I try to figure out how to space it.
Not, not the damage. The damage is here. How far back are you going from the damage?
Right, there, there's further damage from those two pictures. That, but yes. Like, like they're, they're mixing in. It's like one rut stomps and then not even five foot later is another one. And then there's another one. So what I did was from the moment the truck, really when the road starts, uh, it's deformed, from the moment it starts, a hundred twenty-five foot away was the cleanest spot without any interference. There, that road, the hundred twenty-five feet in between is all rutted up and it's just poorly, in poor condition. There, I couldn't find a stopping point in between.
You get the problem here. You're going back a hundred twenty-five foot this way?
With problems.
And a hundred twenty-five foot.
No, 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 no. Uh, a hundred twenty-five foot with that being, the worst part being.
He talking about fifty-seven feet back, fifty-seven feet on the other side of it.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
A hundred twenty-five.
I wanted to get out of the bad area.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Going on either side.
Uh, outside of the bad area, it's about, I didn't measure it, fifteen, twenty foot on either side.
Uh, tw- twenty foot would be the minimum.
Yeah, because I didn't want to leave the bad stuff in there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So counsel, direction?
Need a motion, right?
Yes, we, yes, we did.
I make a motion directing staff to compare bids and select the best bid for the area based on depth of repair and cost.
Second.
I'm sorry?
Michelle seconded me.
Who seconded?
Mrs. Thorpe.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, moving on to our next, last item, the Texas Municipal Insurance Coverage Update.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dominguez was, uh, driving force in this along with, uh, Ms. Bowler and she is stepped away for just a minute, but she'll be right back. In the packet that you were provided was a list of the properties that we have been insuring over the years. We did find in a recent audit of said insurance that we had some properties that we had acquired that had never been added. Uh, so I'm glad to get this reviewed so that we know that we have the proper coverage. And then we do have some buildings that are insured to a level that I'm not sure we still need. So I'm going to turn it over to Jesus and let him and Brooke kind of run with this and then take some counsel direction. If we need to gather some more information and bring it back in November, we can do that as well.
Okay, I'll, uh, start again. So, uh, a while back, me and Brooke were looking at our TML list of vehicles, properties and everything else. And we had some questioning on buildings we have vacated now and the insurance coverage we have on them. So, uh, I'll start with the police, old police department and then I'll go with the, the senior building here and the old school. So these buildings are insurance we pay for. Um, the, the concern would be the old police department, uh, of value. I have talked to Paul and, and we may vacate what's left, but is it worth keeping on the insurance as it is just a barn show at, at this point and we're paying monthly for it, as the same with the senior building and the old school's different topic, but it's the same, same concept is we're paying insurance for these things. These things have been vacated for years. Is it something we want to consider, talk about? Uh, you know, this is at y'all's discretion. And then, uh, we do the properties first and then from there we let y'all discuss.
So do we need any kind of insurance on these properties because they're abandoned and people would, like a liability type insurance? Don't, don't we?
That's a carbon.
Carbon.
Yes, that would be wise.
But I think, um, let me just preface this. I think this is kind of like when you look at car insurance. Do you need full coverage or do you need liability only?
So we have full coverage on it?
Yes.
It's not necessarily liability. Okay.
And I understand, as I brought up a few meetings ago, uh, I'm about to start bringing up a subject that I want to get feedback from the voting public. What do they want to do with the old school? So we can either save it or we can bulldoze it. But it costs money to save, so, but it's going to be up to the voters. It's their choice. But again, we're paying insurance on all these, all these old buildings and it's costing the taxpayers money.
What we're not certain about on the TML coverage, and this is where from the conversation of having some direction from council, I don't know if that's an option. Brooke was saying to just drop it to something like liability, you're either covered or you don't through TML. And if that's the case, then it's basically a moot point at that juncture if Carvin's telling us we need to maintain said coverage. But it, it, it has been something that, that has been a struggle in the past and we've got to normalize in our course of business. When we gain an asset or when we lose an asset, we need to update our insurance coverage and make sure that we have the right things covered. Uh, there was, what, did you tell me what plant, the East plant?
Oh, the East plant, uh, after the twenty twenty bomb, there was no insurance on that.
There was, we didn't add it to the pool.
Yeah, we, we expanded the plant, but nobody ever thought of adding all the, the infrastructure to the, to the insurance. I was like, oh, well, that's.
So as part of our cycle of business with our budget, we need to be doing this every year and reviewing said, uh, assets, not, not just rolling stock, but buildings, plants, et cetera.
Yeah.
Is there no activity going on at, at the school? Or not school, but the place to bargain?
There's some leftover desks and things in there.
They're, they're wrapping up.
We're storing some things, but no.
And we've already made the decision to demo this building.
Yes, sir.
To keep the bricks, or a few bricks.
Right.
Okay, so once that's done, we shouldn't have to have insurance, should we?
That's correct.
That's absolutely correct.
On that building.
I'm correct. So if the place department gets demoed, do you have to carry any insurance on just the land?
No. And we also, don't, don't forget, we're governmental entity, so we have, uh, torque claims protection for most injuries. I mean, it has to involve motor driven equipment. So for the most part, we're not going to be liable. Uh, it, you know, for an injury out there. But it's not a bad idea to have coverage, uh, they provided to the fans. Sometimes just defending yourself in court is, is pretty expensive. So TML's pretty good bargain.
Oh, I say demo, that's that one.
That, that is certainly a conversation that we'll be having with you all in the future because we've had some folks inquire as to that property and what our use is going to be. We've also talked about the old city hall. Um, I've had some folks who want to potentially use that as well. It is currently covered through TML, which is great. Uh, they helped us replace the roof and deal with some of the other issues. Uh, but there's some zoning changes that are going to have to occur before we can either place it as a commercial building and, and move it in that direction or if you all decide to sell it. So that's a future agenda topic that we will be bringing forward after the first of the year.
It was what you really need, just direction on whether to pursue cost of insurance for each of these properties or?
Yeah, so the question was more from the standpoint of liability coverage with Carvin, which I think we've had that question answered at this point. Um, what we'll do is we will get back with our TML representative and we'll have a discussion to find out, hey, can we insure it minimally? And if not, it's just you're covered or it's not, then we, I would need some direction. Are we going to keep it covered or not? From what Carvin's saying, if we have some sort of governmental immunity, maybe that's something that you all are, are fine with, but I'm not sure which way to go.
It's a risk analysis. I mean, we need to see what kind of pricing they would give for you. And particularly when we're talking about vacant buildings, you know, abandoned buildings, I mean, the pricing should be different.
Okay. So at this time, I think I've got a pretty clear direction on what you all want us to do with this. Yes, sir?
There was one more item. Uh, the tank, the hydro pneumatic tank at FM thirty-four, thirty-three. Uh, it's a big old propane tank, best way to put it. Um, and again, this is kind of another discussion, but that item is no longer used. It's in the way one of our new, no, it's not, nevermind, this is correct. Uh, it is not being used, has not been used since they put the water tower in up here. And maybe that's something we could take off insurance one, at a di- different discussion, talk about other uses.
So things that are not being used or are going to be done away with is my understanding you want to remove from our goals?
If we can.
Remove and.
Yes.
Remove the insurance and remove the item?
Yes, sir. I got it.
Either sell the item and put it back in general fund or take scrap yard.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, do we have any future agenda items you'd like to see, uh, discussed that we haven't discussed already?
Nothing hurt?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to bring it up again. It's, it's coming upon winter time and we have seniors in our area that rely heavily on meals on wheels. We have other seniors who are isolated in their homes. I would like for us to talk about the potential of having monthly or bi-weekly luncheons through like, um, Metropore Meal on Wheels. So some cities contribute a small amount so that, so that the luncheon can be hosted there in a local area and seniors can be coming together. So that to go back on the agenda or on the agenda. We pushed quite a lot of that. Thank you.
If we can.
Yeah, so community luncheon with Metropore Meal on Wheels.
All right, you got it. All right. If there's anything else anybody wants to add? No, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Please adjourn.